Everyone on? Can everyone hear us?
Yes.
All right. I'd like to call the regular meeting of the Bagota Board of Education for December 6, 2022. Please stand for this plaque soon. Guys, that was a virtual. It was on Zoom today. You. The New Jersey Open Public Meetings Law was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advance notice of and to attend the meetings of the public bodies at which any business acting affecting their interests is discussed or acted upon. In accordance with the provisions of this act, the Board, the Bagota Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be published by having the date, time, and place thereof posted in the Bagota Borough Hall, communicated by letter to the record filed with the clerk of the Borough of Bagota and posted on the Bagota Board of Education website. Thank you, Missus Sukis. Erfon, roll call.
Sure. Mrs. Alvarez?
Present.
Mr. Alvarez?
Present.
Mr. Chavez?
Present.
Mrs. Cruz?
Present.
Mrs. Coles?
Here.
Mrs. Olivero?
Here.
Mr. Ortega?
Present.
Ms. Ruckett?
Present.
Mr. Miranda?
Presente.
We have a quorum?
Also present are Superintendent Damian Kennedy, Board Attorney William Sukis, School Business Administrator and Board Secretary Erfon Efsil, Assistant Board Secretary Elizabeth Ruiz, and a special guest Dustin Gonzalez, our student representative. Welcome. Open, uh, let's do this. Do I have a motion to open hearing of citizens on agenda items only?
Motion Chavez.
Mr. Chavez, do I have a second?
Second.
Mrs. Ruckett, any board discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Perfect. Is there any, any member of the public who would like to address agenda items only? Speaker, please state your name and address, street address. You have five minutes. Anyone, Mr. Kennedy? No one here present in the public? I don't see anyone. No one online? But I have a motion to close hearing of citizens on agenda items only.
But his hand is up.
Mrs. Coles, do I have a second?
Second.
Susan Cruz, thank you very much. Any board discussion?
There's two people online that want to say something. Yes.
Liza?
All right, we're gonna strike that from the meeting. We have not officially closed.
Um. Hello? Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, this is Lisa Savares, 191 Beachwood Avenue. I'm sorry, I wanted to understand better. This is a space for us to raise questions that are not in the agenda or part of the agenda?
On the agenda items only, there's gonna be a second chance towards the end of the discussion of the agenda.
Okay, no problem. Then I'll reserve my questions for the second part. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Anyone else? I heard you said two, right, Mrs. Alvarez?
Susan Harper.
Hi, Susan. I can't hear you, Susan. You're on mute, Susan.
Hi. Yep, sorry.
Thank you.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, I couldn't, I couldn't see the agenda, so I'm not sure if my question is on the agenda, but I assume it's not. This is my, my, my subject matter, which I want to bring forth to the board today concerns the cafeteria and the food in the cafeteria. I'm assuming it's not on the agenda. If it's not, then I'll wait to the end. Thank you.
It's not at the agenda at the end. Just remember to state your name and full address.
Will do. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Do I have a, uh, do I have a motion to close once again?
Motion.
Idalia Alvarez, Susan Cruz, that okay? Any board discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Moving on to section three dot one of our agenda superintendent's report, Mr. Kennedy?
So before I begin, I'm gonna ask our student rep to give his report tonight, Mr. Gonzalez.
Go ahead, Mr. Gonzalez.
Good evening, Board of Board Members. Recently, the Bagota High School Drama Club had two successful performances of the Clue Play. Currently, the Bagota High School Concert Band, Jazz Band, Choir and Acapella are preparing for the annual winter show, which is on December 16th. The class of 2023 is also preparing for the senior winter show on December 23rd. That is all. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, Mr. Gonzalez.
Okay, I will continue my report. Actually have one, uh, two things. One, I will be reviewing our Start Strong and NJGPA field test data that we must do so by law. But also, I just wanted to make the announcement that next week, December 13th, at 7:00 PM, we will be doing a virtual meeting to review the health lessons that we've been working on. I know some parents have been looking for that, so I sent out a communication last week. We will send out more this week, and we're just gonna review some of the lessons and standards in certain grade levels. So parents have a better understanding and then also provide them with the information if they wish to opt their children out of those lessons. So again, December 13th at 7:00 PM, we're gonna do that virtually. Hopefully, we get more people so that they don't have to try to get somewhere that night. And now, real quick, I'm just gonna go through our data. Let me share. Okay, very good. So, um, we are required by law to, uh, report standardized testing. We did earlier, uh, a month ago was the NJSLA, the Axis Pharrells and the DLMs. We just recently finished up with Start Strong, and then also we have to report on the field test, the NJGPA. Does not count towards anything, uh, but we do have to report on it. Start Strong, so real quick, Start Strong is, uh, ELA grades four through 10, math four through eight, algebra, geometry, algebra two, science six, nine, and 12. It's taken in September, October. It's about a 45-minute to 60-minute test. But what this really is there is to provide teachers with data to help work with students during the year. Three levels, strong support needed, some support needed, less support needed. So ELA, looking at the data real quick. We have, I'm just trying to make this clear out of my way, um, where we are this year. So again, if you're in fourth grade, it's for third grade standards. If you're in ninth grade, it's for eighth grade standard. So it's testing the students in their current grade on what they would have learned over the prior year. Looking at where we are, less support, some support, uh, strong support needed. But what this is really providing is with the data for students who are struggling, but also with standards and concepts that they're struggling with. If you look at a comparison of year to year, 21 to 22 ELA, right? Last year in ELA, uh, fourth grade, 43% of the students, uh, need strong support. This year, 33%, according to this test, right? But that's, the, the data is really looking at ELA in fourth grade in 21 is now ELA in fifth grade. So we're looking at some growth there where we're, we're doing better in those areas. Across the board, we're seeing that trend. Um, also, we had to break it down by ethnicity, uh, based off of IEPs, uh, ethnicity, uh, ELL status, IEP status, economically disadvantaged status. So all this will be posted on the website. Math, again, math is one of the areas that we have put major work into this year, and we will be going over at the end of the things that we're doing. Same thing, areas of where growth is needed by students based off of, right? We seem to have, we seem to be doing pretty well until we get up into the eighth grade is where we're seeing students struggle. Over the last couple of years, we can look back, and this is during the pandemic. Current juniors right now were eighth graders, I believe. Current juniors were eighth graders that first pandemic year where we went halfway through the year and shut down. And then we were all virtual, most of the kids were all virtual, and then last year with masks on. So we think that plays a major part in it. Same thing, year-to-year trends. We have to, we have to report that, but we are seeing more growth. You know, what we have been doing is working from year to year. Same thing with ethnicity going across the board, a year-to-year trends. We continue to see the students improve. Science data, same exact thing, six, ninth, and 12, right? Science is another area, right? That's tied to math that we have to continue working on. Year-to-year trends, pretty similar across the board. Uh, we have been putting major work into the science department. Data teams are being formed, standards are being reviewed, and teachers are working on those standards to help improve, uh, students' success. Same thing across the board, ethnicity, what we have to report again. Again, this will all be posted on our website. And the field test. So last year, first time in a long time, if you remember back, it used to be called, um, HESPA, that your juniors had to pass. This was the new test that was introduced last year. It was a field test. It did not count towards graduation requirement. It was waived. I'm surprised that we're actually reporting on it because it was a field test, because they haven't developed the baseline to create a passing score for this yet. But this year, as of right now, students will need to pass this test to graduate. Okay? Meaning, as in the past, this is one option that they have to pass. There's also the PSATs, SATs, and a, a slew of other tests that they can pass. So a lot of times juniors have already met their graduation requirement when we take this test. We're actually sending out a survey to our high school students to see if there's something that we can entice them with to care about taking the test. Because they, they're, if, if there's nothing in it for them, they don't seem to put their best effort forward. So we're trying to see if there's something that they, you know, do well or put the effort in that we can, um, trade off with them. So we're waiting to see on that. It's tied into graduation ready or not. The state was 39%, we were 26%. These are not good numbers. And we know that. Across the board, same thing. Math readiness, 36 compared to 50. Right? Broken down. Participation rates, we always do a pretty good job. All our students participate in the test. Not many are opting out. District analysis, so our overall observations, um, Start Strong, ELA, four through 10, all grades saw plus on the district average. Almost all demographics improved from 21 to 22. All right, we, we, our, our junior graduation assessment, we are working with that right now and going through the standards. So we only have 60 days to report these things. So we literally just got this 60 days ago. So that's why we're going through the data now. Math Start Strong, more support needed, which we've already begun, began doing, which we're gonna see by the end of this year when we test for NJSLA. We're gonna see that. Same thing with science. Right? We're gonna continue provide training on the blueprint for teachers and expectation. Provide evidence-based interventions through RTI after-school and summer program. Provide class-wide interventions during the elementary wind period. Math, closely identified topic standards that students are struggling with by using testing data. Modifying, adjusting instruction to ensure identified topic standards are mastered. Provide training in the blueprint for teachers' text, test expectation. Increased amount of student participation and responses in class. Improve word problems, improve calculation, procedure fluency of students to decrease cognitive load. Provide additional math instruction through RTI. We've been able to do that by adding the six periods to our math teachers in the high school and with the wind period in the elementary. Math-wide intervention during wind, use evidence-based intervention, prepare students in algebra readiness prior to algebra, and then extra math periods in teacher schedules. Science, same thing. Data teams need to be created, identify data in question analysis, determine which student standards are deficient or not taught. So that's going through the standards, seeing where we're teaching that and what grade level, and making sure it's tied to the test. Identify chapter topic time when to teach those standards, modify scope and sequence, provide more opportunities for labs, and identify equipment and resource needs for improvement. So I, I can say that we have found the formula for improvement in ELA. We are using that formula in math as we speak right now, and we're going to begin applying that formula in science to help improve that. So I'm, I'm looking forward to the spring when we test again to see what our interventions are doing in those great subjects. That is it.
Thank you, Mr. Kennedy. I thought it was appropriate before we go on as, as usual. Prior, Big State TTO president, Mr. David Loza, has passed. If I'm not mistaken, about two days ago. And left behind students, a very young gal. And a wife who's also a native, spouse of native. So I wanted to take this with a minute of bold and silent. Thank you. Moving on to resolution four dot one.
Excuse me, Frank, is, is your microphone on? It might not be on. Did anyone hear that?
Much better.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Moving on to section three, uh, four dot one, approval of minutes of the November 14th, 2022 Regular Public Meeting Open Session. Do I have a motion to approve resolution four dot one?
Motion Chavez.
Mr. Chavez, do I have a second?
Second call.
Mrs. Coles? Any board discussion? Mr. Erfon?
Mrs. Alvarez?
Yes.
Mr. Alvarez?
Uh, I'd have to abstain because I wasn't present.
Mr. Chavez?
Yes.
Mrs. Cruz?
Yes.
Mrs. Coles?
Yes.
Mrs. Olivero?
I also was not present. I need to abstain.
Mr. Ortega?
I would also like to abstain as I was present.
Ms. Ruckett?
Yes.
Mr. Miranda?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you, Board. Moving on, we don't have any different five dot one, so we're moving on to the education portion of the agenda. Resolution six dot 16, approval of agenda items six dot one through six dot 15. Is there a motion to approve resolution six 16?
Motion called.
Lisa Coles, do I have a second?
Second.
BC Rocket, any board discussion? Roll call, Mr. Erfon.
Mrs. Alvarez?
Yes.
Mr. Alvarez?
Yes.
Mr. Chavez?
Yes.
Mrs. Cruz? Mrs. Coles?
Yes.
Mrs. Olivero?
Yes.
Mr. Ortega?
Yes.
Ms. Ruckett?
Yes.
Mr. Miranda?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Moving on to resolution seven dot 15, uh, personal portion of the agenda. Seven dot 15, approval of agenda items seven dot one to seven dot 14. Do I have a motion to approve seven dot 15?
Motion Chavez.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chavez. Do I have a second?
Second, John.
John Ortega. Mr. Erfon? Huh?
Any board discussion?
Oh, sorry, any board discussion? Mr. Erfon?
Sure. Mrs. Alvarez?
Yes.
Mr. Alvarez?
Yes.
Mr. Chavez?
Yes.
Mrs. Cruz?
Yes.
Mrs. Coles?
Yes.
Mrs. Olivero?
Yes.
Mr. Ortega?
Yes.
Ms. Ruckett?
Yes.
Mr. Miranda?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Forgive me, um, after this sad news, it kind of hits me so. Moving on to resolution, uh, moving on to the finance portion of the agenda, resolution eight dot 10, approval of consent agenda items, eight dot one through eight dot nine. Is there a motion to approve resolution eight dot 10?
Motion Chavez.
Mr. Chavez, do I have a second?
Second call.
Mrs. Coles, any board discussion? Mr. Erfon?
Mrs. Alvarez?
Yes.
Mr. Alvarez?
Yes.
Mr. Chavez?
Yes.
Mrs. Cruz?
Yes.
Mrs. Coles?
Yes.
Mrs. Olivero?
Yes.
Mr. Ortega?
Yes.
Ms. Ruckett?
Yes.
Mr. Miranda?
Yes.
Motion carried.
There is nothing for nine dot one. Moving on to ten dot one, committee reports. Are there any committee reports this evening?
Yes, the negotiation committee had a preliminary meeting ahead of our meeting with the teachers tomorrow evening. We will report at the next meeting on the findings in that.
Thank you, Mrs. Ruckett. Anyone else? Okay, so just to update everyone on the board, I, I know you were updated, and just to update the public and those listening, we, we took various approaches to discuss with the mayor and council, the referendum opportunity that we have, uh, coming up. Mr. Kennedy and the lawyer and our Board of Ed, a lawyer attorney, Mr. Sukis, uh, provided them letters, um, in request for us to, uh, maybe have a meeting with them and/or presentation. I also placed some copies of the preliminary and the plan options in each mailbox at the mayor and council. On Thursday, this last Thursday, I attended a council meeting where in an unofficial capacity, as a resident, I basically said, you got something, I hope to hear back. They did decide on January 19th. Mr. Sukis did receive a letter from the Borough Council, uh, offering that date. I, what I don't understand, I want to make, you know, make sure we clear it up now. I think they're trying to have a joint meeting is more what I saw, or we were just trying to bring the architect and, and present to them. So what, what, what would that be, Mr. Kennedy and/or? Because it seemed more like a joint meeting, move it to the city citizens.
I think there were some discussions, if I recall, in our, the notion of the board here was a joint meeting. The, the sense I'm getting from what I got back from the Borough Attorney was that this is a council meeting at which the board is gonna be presenting using the architect.
Okay, so does it have to be made, uh, do we have to submit it in the paper? That most of us are attending because we will be present in the same room if that's the case? Or we're gonna limit it to a few and the architect?
Well, I think, I think that anytime you have a quorum, it raises an issue of a meeting. So if you have a committee who's going, which is less than a quorum, you're not gonna have to do the additional.
So I guess the building and grounds committee, we need you all there.
How does that work? Because if you're a resident of Bagota and you're attending a public meeting as a resident, why couldn't the board?
Because you're in the same room, you're no longer.
You're not discussing anything. You're not discussing any business. I mean, the architect and, and the lawyer are gonna be presenting.
Right, you're, you know, when you're a board meeting, you're not shedding your, your rights citizen, your citizen.
Right.
In this town, you're absolutely right. So, um, what I, I think if the board, if a quorum's gonna go, you gotta be careful. You gotta be careful in terms of discussing, um, with, with the public, with the council, et cetera, because once you discuss, your, your, your status as a citizen may not be as clear at that point in time.
But if they're all quiet?
To Mrs. Coles' point, if the architect is the presenter and none of us utter a word.
We should be fine?
Mm-hmm. Would we be?
I think the building grounds committee should be together. That group should sit together, and then I think anyone else can sit anywhere if they like. And then, I mean, we're going, we're, we're going, the board is going representing, so.
And I think we should make public.
But then maybe we just make it public.
Yeah, I think we should make, because you do want parents to see that the process, the fair due process is transpiring, and it doesn't hurt anyone. We, we don't have to have a discussion, but we should make it public, and we should show up. And it is what it is.
Absolutely.
I mean, we're doing our due diligence. Would you not agree?
I'll, uh, you know, I'll take this up directly with the Borough Attorney, um, and, and raise the issue to the extent the letter, uh, we didn't, we didn't really go the distance, whether it was going to be a, a joint meeting or just a presentation. So why don't, why don't I just take the opportunity to clarify within and, uh, and then if, if it's gonna be a joint meeting, we, I think there's plenty of time to get noticed.
Yes. So just put it all on your calendars, uh, January 19th, and I assume they're probably gonna do 6:00 PM or 6:30, right?
If you do a joint meeting, you don't have to all sit up there. At least you could all be there, present.
Yeah, I think it was just, I think our real goal was in, in referencing with Mr. Kennedy and the architect recently. It was just basically the architect will go in, answer any concerns, what are the plans? What are the shapes and forms of the fields? Because we're not discussing the referendum. That's not something we have to do. What we're discussing is here we have an opportunity to improve our community, improve the services and the offerings, or out of a roll-off. So, and, and what I mean by that is a, a line item that wasn't a budget that is being, um, completed in 2023, is that correct, Mr. Erfon? And, and there's, and it's two questions. So that one question, um, can be separated if and so we get the county mayor and council on board. So I think it's just more of a generic feeler, and then we could discuss it later. So it might not even be a meeting, but I guess you can take that on and we can clarify it a bit.
And you know what? And I, I think since we're gonna have the opportunity to, to get together, uh, at that meeting and, and we're, you know, we're getting, we're scheduling it now for that time, we might as well go as a board and do a joint meeting and a presentation. Let's take advantage of the time and, and get everybody on the same page.
I, I, I do agree with Alvarez and it's just, um, get to know each other, right? That we're all trying to work, uh, in the same direction, but take it on, let me know. Is that okay, Mrs. Sukis?
Will do. Yes.
All right. And before I move on, um, I do want to make everyone aware that this is Mrs. Coles' last meeting. She's done, don't cry. She's done a strong six years, is that correct, Mrs. Coles? A strong six years on the Board of Ed. I know she's had her ups and downs and, and, and her strong opinions and our strong opinions. And at the end of the day, we all serve up here because we, we, we want the best. I don't think anyone comes up to this board or even puts this kind of time in, in the district that does not have the well-being. And it may be your own opinion of well-being and all direction of well-being, but you have the well-being of the children and the future of the children at heart. And I commend you, um, I, I can highlight, you know, the parking lot has been a tremendous, uh, accomplishment. You know, there are so many accomplishments we could name, uh, but you did an amazing job. You know, you had some amazing folks, you worked really hard, and, and, and everyone here appreciates you. Everyone out there should appreciate you, because unless you're up here, unless you're leaving your family twice a month for an hour, two hours a day, and, and five other times a month on committee meetings, you simply do not and will not understand the time consuming and the, the words we get at home when your family says, but where you're going or what are you doing? And I totally, I mean, I, I can't take my hat, six years are six years strong. Um, and I do hope and wish that you continue to give us time and you continue to put in work because they, you know that saying, you know, 10% of the people do 90% of the things? Well, in Bagota, it's about 2% of the people do 95% of the things. Uh, it's a very small group of people working and doing so. So, who knows is true. So I do want to say I, I appreciate you. We've appreciated it. We do thank you for the challenge you gave us, and, and if there ever's ever an availability, please put your name in because we do appreciate you.
Thank you. I, I accept all of that, and, and I'll, I'll say this. It was not, certainly wasn't a, a cakewalk when we joined, and I appreciate your professionalism. I appreciate your ability to look at the bigger picture when lots of other outside noise might have said, don't. I, I personally appreciate the, the immediate step toward professionalism in putting back the decorum that was necessary for this board. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr.
Is that all? Thank you, Board. Next on the agenda is old business, uh, an item 11 dot one. Is there an old business for the board would like to discuss? Thank you. Next on the agenda is new business, items 12 dot one. Is there any new business the board would like to discuss?
Oh, I actually do have new business.
Go ahead.
Um, I forgot to bring the paperwork. I was down at the League of Municipalities, and as I was walking around the convention center, there was a woman who deals with, um, giving free, um, eye exams. She goes to school, she goes to businesses. They come in a, you know, what do they call those? Mobile, mobile unit, and they give free eye exams. And then you could, you know, so I think that's a good thing to look into. I have the paperwork, I just forgot to bring it with me. So I think a lot of people, it's very expensive, they can't afford it, and if this is gonna help. So I'll get that to you, Frank.
Yeah, thank you. Eye exams are very expensive and they're not normally fairly covered, right? Before I move forward, I do want to congratulate Mr. Marco Novaro. I don't know who he is as of yet, but I have kind of heard of the name. He won the election for Board of Ed through our write-ins. I think it was like 15 to 14, if I'm not mistaken, or 16 to 15. But congratulate him. I will say that he's got big shoes to fill. Six years of grinding and come in here, in my opinion, with an open mind, open heart and reach out to any one of us so that we can maybe start the new year getting to know each other. So that's good for that. Thank you for new business. I guess we'll try to see if we get some eye exams. And this is where we open hearing of citizens on any discussion. Do I have a motion? Hearing of citizens?
Motion.
BC Rocket, do I have a second?
Second, John.
John Ortega, any board discussion? Call in favor? From the public who would like to discuss any portion of the agenda and or questions you may have had. Please state your name and street address. You have five minutes and I guess we open up to Lisa, Lizette first, is that correct? Oh, hi, welcome. Oh, welcome. Can we get a microphone? Thank you very much.
The microphone. Thank you. Lizette Cervario Soto for 191 Beechwood. Thank you so much. I did have one question. I heard today you went over about having a meeting with the council about the referendum. I have some questions regarding that, but my main, my more pressing question is in regards to the student increase in our schools. My daughter has just told me, mommy, we have a new kid in my class. It is kind of crowded. So there are 25 kids in her third grade classroom. Okay? So I don't, I never thought that we at Bogota, being the town that we are, that we have, we don't have all the, we don't have a better student teacher ratio. Particularly with our kids that have fallen behind due to the pandemic. They need more one-to-one attention. So that is a pressing matter. It concerns me. My daughter is in the pull-out resource for other areas. And another aspect that hit to us personally was that while she was pulled out from her classroom to meet a smaller group of kids, whether it be math or ELA, they were placed in another room where it was shared with the fifth graders. So I told my daughters, like, what happened to this test? What happens? Like, mommy, I cannot listen to the questions because the fifth graders are so loud, they're out of control. So there are two classrooms going on while one teacher is trying to teach a smaller, you know, smaller classroom. She's trying to teach the kids while the other kids are learning with another teacher, another whatever subject. I brought this up with Mr. Inglaze. Okay, this is a Bixby. And he was kindly able to accommodate. But then again, he's finding spaces within the school. And he was only able to accommodate for four days out of five days. So if testing day, if testing goes on the day that they're all together, so tough luck for my daughter, which is not fair, you know? And that's my main concern. I know you have this referendum coming up. But I wanted to understand more of what that is about. Our schools need more rooms. They need more space. It can be that there are 25 kids with one teacher and possibly an aide trying to get everybody to be on the same page and get them up to speed where they need to be. I mean, you look at their grades, how they are now. How are we doing any better when they're, we're not offering the one-to-one approach? So that's my main question.
Thank you.
So we are look, so part of the referendum is, is that we want to put all the grades in one building. So all the third grades would be in one building because right now what happens is once we get to about 25 kids, if they're supposed to go to STEAM, then we send them to Bixby. But we have been getting an influx of students over the last couple of months that, you know, that we couldn't just prepare for because we didn't know this was coming. So we're doing the very best. So I know for testing, students would never test where something else is going on in the same room. So I know Mr. Inglaze did speak to me about this and we are looking at the schedule to see where we can find quiet spaces for students to do work. But part of this referendum is, is like if we have 90 third graders in the district, but if they're on the STEAM side, they all want to go to STEAM. So I have to let 25 go there and then another 25, but then there's only 40 at Bixby. If we're all in the same building, then I can even out those numbers and it would be a lot easier for that. So that's part of this referendum is creating grade level buildings where we can spread the 80, 90 kids between four classes besides two in STEAM and two in Bixby. And I'm going to be honest with you, we got extremely lucky like with St. Joseph's. And that opened up two classrooms in every building. Without that space right now, I don't, we would be in trailers. And there is a chance that we might have to go to trailers in the future if the referendum fails. If, in a perfect world, we would build 20 classrooms in STEAM. That's like $40 million. I don't think we'd get a referendum passed like that right now. So we're doing the best that we can with the spaces. We're getting creative. And we already are working towards next year and in the next two years and relocating to one building to, to to thin out those classes.
So you said that you are waiting on the referendum. Is the referendum only addressing the the concern of readjusting all the schools to have just first grade or to through pre-K to second grade and all of that? Or does they have other components? Could it have a separate question that addresses the main pressing issues? Because you may have, you know, some of the parents that might want to just support what it is, the main concern. I know there is a component with, you know, getting more complex or I don't know.
So yes, to answer you, simply there are, there will be two questions. One question will be for the education and the facilities, a career technical building. Upgrades in electricity, upgrades in certain buildings, bathrooms, auditoriums, expanding Bixby Gym to make a bigger gym there. And that will be question one, which would be a zero tax impact because we're coming off a referendum. So if we are able to pass that, you wouldn't see an increase in your taxes. The second question would be part of the fields and athletic complex. That would be an increase in taxes. So the board recognized that we do need more space and we do need this. And having two questions so that it's very clear what we need so that the public can vote properly.
Thank you. And the last one, I promise. So with, you said that we are having unexpected influx of children joining our, the school district. And I'm not sure how do you guys vet that the actual children is an actual resident of Bogota? But I know of hand that there are kids that come here, okay, that are not living in this town. So is there any, are you guys as a group collectively addressing this issue as a matter of like, how is this being vetted? Because it is really not fair that, you know, we have been residents. Our kids are born in this town. We're paying taxes and our properties and all of this. And meanwhile, you know, my, my daughter is not getting the benefit of an, with an overcrowded classroom where there may be potentially kids that don't belong to this district.
So I will say this. When students first register, they do have to fill out an affidavit and show proof of residency with names on there. What I am witnessing more and more of in my time in Bogota is that parents are separated. Some are living in Bogota. They live in sometimes in Bogota, sometimes outside of Bogota. The county's been cleared us that we have to keep them in here right now. We do have a residency officer. I sent them out this week checking on seven different addresses. So if someone, if you think someone is a live in town or if someone was living next to you and moved and you tell the principal, then the principal writes up a report to me and then we send an attendance officer out and they check to see if they live there. If they don't live there, we send them a letter and say, you can't be here. But I will say this, in the last three years, we had a blue ribbon school. We have free pre-K. The houses have exploded. A lot of people have sold, so a lot more families are moving in. So we think that's a big part of the population that we're seeing the increase. So there's, you know, it's kind of like a perfect storm hitting us right now, but that's where we're at right now.
And just to answer, just on behalf of the board, some of us have had the same concerns and we've dived in. We've actually asked our Board Attorney to give us some guidance on how we can legally approach that situation. And we have gotten some guidance about marriages and how that works out. Some that I think would play in our favor over time. It's not as easy as we wish it would be, but, but well, just so you know, it's been a question and there are some answers behind it and we just hope that it plays out.
And we did start this summer a re-registration process for students. So students in pre-SK, pre-K going to kindergarten, students in fifth going to sixth, and then we picked 10th grade and then all out of district students. So I think we're going to continue that with certain grade levels, re-registering each year to make sure that everyone that's here should be here.
I think Susan Harper was online waiting.
I got Carmel has her hand raised.
So Carmel Bernie?
Hi, good evening. Carmel Bernie, 162 East Fort Lee Road. In regards to the referendum, are you going to be holding any more town meetings regarding that referendum? When I attended the first one and you presented the whole program, the estimated cost tax impact at that time was $125 to each household. When I saw the flyer, the tax impact was $260. I would expect by next year, that 260 could go up more with the prices of everything. That's going to affect a lot of homeowners. There's a lot of apartments have been built in this town and they're not affected by that tax rate. And there's a lot of students coming in from those apartments. So are you going to be presenting more? Is that number going to go down a bit or do you expect it to go up or is there some relief in it?
So yes, we definitely will be doing, I was on the fence about doing something in December. I know it's a busy time of the month, but I think once we get back after the holidays in January and February, we're going to be holding some town halls. I will be go, we will be going to PTO meetings. Again, we're meeting with the council. So there's going to be definite numbers. Again, those were all prelim numbers, but when we come to you in January, we will have the exact tax impacts because now it's based off of two questions and there's certain, you know, 25, 20, 30 years and bonds and then pending on fields, the longevity of those fields, but the architects are going to be at these meetings. So I will, we will be doing a ton of meetings and answering all questions starting after the holiday break in January and February. More literature will be going out with exact numbers. But we working with the architects and they kind of have a plan on how to attack this. And this has been their recommendation because once we get into January, February, those numbers are locked in and that's where we're going to go with.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
I see, I see Susan Harper on there, but she doesn't raise her hand.
Susan Harper?
Wait, is there a question? Is the school doctor coming to do physicals again? That I do not know. I think I would have to check with Mr. Derupo, but from my last understanding, they, the school doctor does not do physicals anymore. From what I remember, that you have to go to your own doctor. But I can find out more information and get that to you. But last I remember, when we switched over to the new doctor, he did not do physicals anymore as that was not part of it. Yeah, Kristen Meber, 3311 Orchard Terrace. And then Susan Harper, do you, I, I'm going to allow you to speak. You didn't raise your hand.
Hi, Susan.
Hi, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Great, wonderful. Okay, great. Okay, so I came here just initially to talk about just first about the food in the cafeteria. I'm hearing complaints just about it, that the quality of the food has gone down significantly. This is in the high school cafeteria. I'm seeing pictures of it that look absolutely totally unappetizing. And of course, you know, if students, you know, need to perform at peak level, they need to be nourished too. So I would appreciate it if someone would take a look at that or do an audit of it and just sort of see just what's happening with the quality of the food there. But to my understanding too, that seniors are allowed to go out to buy food and buy lunch. If they bring back food to any students, they've gotten, I've been told that they've gotten in trouble about that. However, if they can't eat the food that's in the cafeteria, you know, they sort of go through the day cranky and not productive. So that's.
I'll address that first. First, if you have pictures, please send them to me because
I will.
The information helps me because we do hold the the cafeteria to task and Erfan meets with them weekly, our BA, so we will address that. But the law is because we offer free and reduced lunch, students are not allowed to bring lunch up to the cafeteria for other students. That's unfortunately the law because we are giving out free lunch. So we're not allowed to even have a bake sale during lunch. Everything has to be done after school. I think we're about 60% free and reduced. I've been seeing in the news that they are throwing around the idea about giving out free lunch again. But to the quality, then I would have to see pictures and, you know, we've been meeting with them and the, the food committee has been meeting with the cafeteria as well.
Okay, very good. I'm assuming, I'm sorry, it's, it's kind of hard to see, you know, who is actually speaking. I'm assuming that's Mr. Kennedy is speaking?
Yes.
Okay, okay, thank you. Okay. My, my other, my other point, I was not planning to bring this up, but I'm going to bring this up after your presentation, Mr. Kennedy. First of all, I want to commend you and just everybody on the board, you know, over the years for all their hard work during the pandemic. I mean, this was a national, international world crisis. And it was exceptionally hard on everybody and hard on the kids. I know it's hard on my son, who, my son who, who even said to me at some point in time, I need to go back in person, mom, you know, who said I even had enough. However, I am absolutely alarmed by the stats that you just shared. And I'm also alarmed by the fact that folks are not raising their voice about this, that they're talking about a referendum and not about those stats. You know, we, we've all have gone through a very difficult time. And I appreciate, you know, a lot of the ideas that are, that are being, you know, put forth. I appreciate the extra help. I know my own son, you know, participates and takes advantage of extra help where, where, where he can. But I'm concerned that maybe, and I don't know if maybe these, these, this is in your, your PowerPoints. You know, are there incremental goals and goals that are set, you know, for, you know, the action steps that are going to be taken with respect to how we're going to help these kids? You know, what are the, other resources are going to be needed in order to help, you know, the kids? I know we're talking about this referendum for, for this for, and I know we still need to build for the future for the, for the town too. So I recognize that as well. So please don't think I don't recognize that. But I am also consider, I'm really concerned about the fact of how some of these kids are, are, you know, are behind. And we need to be thinking about them being able to work outside of, you know, school, being able to compete in college. College is not grade 13. And the fact that we're putting people out there with the Bogota, you know, education and premature on them. So I'd love to hear a little bit more about that, if there are actual quantitative goals or incremental goals and any other assistance that you feel is needed, Mr. Kennedy. Thank you.
So I will say this, our NJ SLA scores was what we're, we've been, was what we really count on. The Start Strong and this field test, again, the field test, I'm surprised we had to present it because it was bad data across the state. It was the first time these kids were. It was the first time these kids were taking the test. It was the first time they set the score very high and people were up. Uh, up in arms about the high, the, the passing rate for this first test. So I think that that's going to change in itself alone. Incrementally, we are looking at improving our tier three to tier two to tier one. Uh, we are looking to go between ten to fifteen to twenty percent and moving the kids through. Um, but I, I will say this, when you compare our NJ SLA data that we took last year and, and our. Fourth through, you know, our ELA scores were better than the state across the board. Uh, our lower math grades were better. We had some uh math problems in uh nine and tenth grade, which we're addressing as we speak. But our, our seniors graduate and they picked their colleges. And, and last year, I don't, I don't have the figures in front of me. But all of them got into colleges. Uh, we had a few million dollars in scholarships and grants. So I, I'm confident in what we're doing. Again, some of these numbers are ugly, but that's what these numbers are going to look like right now. Start Strong data is not an evaluation tool. It was a forty-five minute test that the test, the kids took in September. Based off of what they learned last year after having the summer off. So it's really just to help us identify certain topics and trends that we can work to improve on. So the NJ SLA data is what to me is the most important thing because that's what uh we're truly measured against. Uh, in our DFG groups, in this, in the district, in the county, and also in the state. And, and our numbers compared to everyone coming out of the pandemic. People are calling me, asking me, what did we do in ELA? Because our scores were so good. So I, I think we are trending in the right direction. Again, I agree with you. The data I presented tonight, I was upset I had to present it because I don't think it's true of what we're doing. The eleventh grade is a field test. They had, the students were taking it and they really had no reason that they cared to take it. So we're trying to convince kids to care about a test that they didn't need. So that's what we're in the process of doing now. This year, they're going to need to graduate. So they're going to have something behind it that if they don't do well and it's going to affect their, them personally. As of right now, in the last couple of years, they haven't even tested. This group of juniors, uh, the current seniors right now. Haven't taken a test in four years. So it was all new to them as well again. So I agree, numbers don't look good, but I'm confident in what we're doing and. The final product is my job is to help students get out of high school and into a, a career, a college or a. Uh, trade, and I, I think we're a hundred percent every year and the student's doing that. So. Uh, but I agree, the numbers don't look good, but. That's, that's what the data uh looks like right now on these two tests, but overall, I think we're doing a good job.
Well, thank you. I, I look, I look forward to seeing just any, you know, more information as we move along and. Being helpful. I think it's helpful to get the whole community involved if this is, you know, a community effort. Um, about, you know, raising our standards and, you know, just getting everybody excited about the whole. I know it's not so exciting to do standardized tests, but I'm saying just getting excited about the entire process. Um, knowing that it's something that's going to help them. Okay, thank you.
Anyone else?
Antonette Ramirez.
Mr. Ramirez?
Hi guys, Antonette Ramirez, ninety-eight Queen M Road. Um, I had two questions. The first one is. I just wanted to know if there's going to be um indoor soccer practices this winter. And my other question is, how are we doing with hiring um more class three officers for Bixby School and the high school?
Uh, I mean, indoor soccer would be up to the soccer coach, so I would have to hear from them. I mean, that's, they put in facility use. Um, you know, we have the space for them to do it. I know the rec is doing a couple of different things in the schools. Class three officers, I interviewed someone last week. Um, we purposely raised the hourly rate to try to attract more people, but. There's a shortage across the board. There's a shortage with teachers, shortage with aides, subs, bus drivers and class three officers. So. I did interview someone last week. I have been talking to the chief. Uh, and the board about the possibility of adding a resource officer. Um, but again, that's budgeting, that's planning, but we are in the process and we are looking at that. Uh, we have created a schedule for the class threes to be in all the buildings and check on them and do the best that we can. So, but four buildings, two class threes, we're doing the best that we can to cover them, but. If, if I had five officers to hire, they would be hired. But as of right now, you know, we're, we are advertising, we're doing everything in our power. To hire them, we even raised the, the hourly rate for them to try to attract more people. So we're hoping in January, we get another one.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
I think Susan Harper has her hand raised again. I don't know.
I'm sorry, I don't. I thought I was lowering my hand. I apologize. No.
Anyone else? Do I have a motion to close hearing of citizens?
Motion Chavez?
Do I have a second?
Second, John.
Any board discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, now moving on to executive session in section fourteen dot one of the agenda board, um. Second, where I uh. Where I see dot two, three, one, PL nineteen seventy-five, also known as the sunshine law. Authorizes a public body to meet in executive or private session. Under servant and the certain limited circumstances and whereas said law requires the board. To adopt a resolution at a public meeting before it can meet in such executive or private session. Now therefore be it resolved by the pagoda board of education that it does hereby determine. That this is necessary to meet in executive session on December sixth, twenty twenty-two at approximately seven PM. To discuss matters involving neg- negotiations, litigation and personnel. That the matter discussed will be made public when confidentiality is no longer required. And action pursuant to said discussion shall take place only at a public session. We're good, right? Did I have, oh, did I have a motion?
Motion Cole.
Mrs. Cole, have a second. Chavez, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, uh, for those, yep.
Are we good? Is everyone good? Do you have a motion to open, reopen board meeting?
Motion Chavez.
Do you have a second?
I will.
Any board discussion?
No.
Do I have a motion adjourned?
I will make that motion for the last time.
Yay Lisa!
We'll reopen it. Uh oh.
Oh.
All in favor?
I thought I did that. All in favor?
Aye.
Your polls?
No.
Alright, do you have a motion adjourned?
I will make that motion adjourned.
Do I have a second? Okay Lisa, congrats. Good luck. All in favor?
Aye.
Have a good one.